Could you find?
I couldn't find it.
Okay, so, but you don't.
Oh, I thought you said you did.
I would never do that to someone.
Yeah, right. No, last year's, this would have been, last year's wouldn't have had it then.
No, it was the year before.
Oh, you didn't approve bed tax?
No, no.
We did it two years.
Oh, okay.
It was a two-year agreement.
Well, that explains why I didn't find.
Yes.
Interesting, okay. Yeah, I don't.
I think, I think they're sliding that in.
All right, good evening. It's after 7:00 P.M. Welcome to a regularly scheduled Worcester City Council meeting held here this Monday, November 17th, 2025. The meeting is livestreamed on YouTube, and our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, December 1st, 2025. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the council members.
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappick.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and the agenda will remain as presented, other than, as we have done in the first and the last two meetings, where we have our seven TIF parcel items that we will be reading them all at one time, and then having a discussion, since they're basically all the same thing, other than the specifics of the addresses.
Will we want to, will we want to vote on them individually, though?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess we could just read them and do it that way, then?
Yeah, I would, I would say unless there's any conversation we want to continue to have, so.
Yep. Okay, well, I'll stand corrected. We'll just do it like normal.
Yep.
All right, with that, at this time, I'd ask to stand and join the members of City Council reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our November, or excuse me, no, yes, our November 3rd meeting?
Motion, oh, go ahead. I'll be the second.
So who's the first?
That was me.
Jen.
Jen, okay. Ms. Warden's first, Ms. Knappick second. All in favor of approving, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Communications from the mayor, good evening. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. President, council. Just a fair number of things to recap, and then I'll warn you right up front that I'm going to go on a little bit at length at the end, but it's about the seven parcel TIFs. So if I didn't do it at the end, I'd probably do it during the course of that discussion, and my hope is that my comments might help clarify the situation a little bit on those parcel TIFs and talk about those. So first thing, as far as activities since the previous meeting, we've had Election Day. We now know who is going to be filling some seats here, come first of the year. Congratulations to Mr. Owens and to Mr. Paul. Look forward to seeing you join us. We also have two new members of the Worcester City School District Board of Education. And Joel and I had a chance to meet briefly with both of them in the offices upstairs, and look forward to working them, with them in the future. Speaking of which, on the 6th, the Worcester Schools Business Advisory Council Finance Committee met to talk about their upcoming strategic plan, and Joel and I had lunch the following day with Superintendent Tudor. I'll touch more on this later, but it's clear we have, you know, we've always had a shared interest with the school district as far as different activities going on in the community, and we're going to have several to talk about in 2026. And if you are interested, I think Thursday's Board of Education meeting is going to be informative, so you might tune into that if you have the chance. We had a GOBA organizational meeting on November 6th. I mentioned this before, but they're coming to town this summer early. It's the evenings, they'll be here the nights of June 23 and June 24. This is their third trip through Worcester, having been here in 1994, excuse me, '95 and 2004 previously. We're already looking at a three-day celebration, July 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and now this is like just the week before, so maybe we'll stretch this into a full week of festivities there. That same evening, we had a public hearing for Planning Commission on the proposed amendments to the residential zoning code that we've talked about, and you may feel like we beat to death over the past year, but taking our time and doing it right was a worthwhile way to go about this. And procedurally, as you know, Planning Commission makes a recommendation to council on that type of thing, and they'll be doing so at their next meeting, and then council acts on the legislation just with that recommendation. And like all recommendations you get, you can choose to accept it, ignore it, or do whatever. So that, we'll be having that discussion later on. I just wanted to take an opportunity to give Vince Marion a pat on the back. We were very apprehensive going in, knowing that there were some in the community that could be very skeptical about the process, and Vince went out of his way to include those segments in the discussion. Some, the proposal that's going to eventually come to council is going to look much different. I shouldn't say much different. It's going to be different than what was originally proposed, because some compromises were made to address concerns from the public and the people on the steering committee. And at the public hearing, I certainly expected there to be fireworks, and instead, everyone that showed up was in favor of the proposal and went out of their way to praise Vince for his accommodation and as far as working the process. So I'm not going to tell you when this comes to council that this is the perfect set of amendments, because there's probably, there's things that are going to need change there. We don't even know what some of those are yet. We'll find out on the way. But as far as the process that Vince used to get to that, I think he came pretty close to perfect as that process. Now, we had council members that were part of that, so I appreciate your involvement. And if you feel differently on how things went, feel free to speak up, but everything I heard of that public hearing was positive. Couple Veterans Day program we participated in, there was one at Rotary, had one at High School the following day. Those were nice to be a part of. On the 10th, the League of Women Voters had a program down at the library with Commissioner Matt Martin and Jen Kuiper from the County Planning Department to talk about county land use planning. That was an interesting, I was certainly not a participant in it, but it was fun to sit in the audience and see where the interests fell. The 11th, we had breakfast with Dr. McCall from the college. Again, things seem to be going well there. They've got some, they've got some ambitious plans that kind of played in with the zoning code revisions we talked about, because they've got some older housing, much like some of our older neighborhoods, that they're struggling on what to do with, whether they, you know, put more money into keeping them, or they tear down and they try to rebuild. So I think we're kind of on the same page on that front. The next morning, we had a WDC meeting at the hospital. The hospital was the host for this one. Scott Boise did a presentation, and it was a reminder, if, I think maybe we're all aware of it, but if not, we should be, that the Worcester Community Hospital is not just a service provider to support our other businesses. It's an economic driver for the community, so we're lucky to have that. The morning, we also had the commissioners' hearing. They, they meet weekly, and this was their vote on the Graham Farm annexation, and we're happy to report that it was approved without comment. We had no opposition to that, so there's a statutory period, I think it's 60 days. Is that right, Jonathan?
Yes.
Six, 60 days from that vote before it can come to council. So you'll be seeing that in, you know, the annexation process is it goes to council first for a decision on what utilities you're going to offer. We did that. Then it goes to the county. They, commissioners vote on it, and then it comes back to the city. And that'll involve public hearings and the whole thing, so again, look forward to that in January probably. Also had a meeting at the Yalice Noble Ice Frink. They were, they wanted to express, Phil and I weren't real sure what we were there for, but turns out they just want to express their thankfulness. They got a grant through the bed tax fund, Quinn Stanley, to replace the air conditioning units, and they're very pleased by that. And they said without the help of the city and council on that, they would have been hard pressed to make those out of, those repairs out of their operating budget. Had a Wayne Trails meeting. Everything's going smoothly there. Reported back that the GOBA people, when they were here, were really pleased with the community and really pleased by the local bike trails that we have, or multi-use paths, I guess is a better, than not only ones we have in place, but the ones we have planned, so that's credit to the community. Then we had the quarterly mayor's meeting at the Career Center. Tom Ballinger, the Wayne County Sheriff, and the Wayne County Emergency Management Director, Jerry Winkler, provided a program. We did get an offer. I came away with an offer that they would be willing to give us a tour of the new jail facility, and I told, I gave Mr. Sanders a head up, heads up on that, and left it up to him to figure out what time would work best for council members. So, no, I know he's got plans on that, I'm not sure what they are, and he'll, he'll be trying to get that scheduled. Then Friday morning, we had the annual budget retreat for the hospital. Took, you know, started at eight, went till noon, did budget and some other training things, and I just saw out to Mr. Sanders that I know at some point the budget process seems like a very hurried affair, and that maybe in future years, we might want to consider the, I know it's asking you to give up a morning, or an evening, or Saturday, whatever, but we might consider doing a, it'd be, excuse me, it'd be a public meeting. We'd have to do that, but spending, if you, if you want to do a deeper dive on the budget, that's probably the way to do it. But again, just a thought. Saturday, I wanted to make mention Lydia Thompson's funeral. Some of you may have never met Lydia, and if you didn't, you'll never see her like again. I know Mr. Purvis is in the room, and I'm sure Dave was acquainted with her over the years, and she was not one to suffer fools, and if she thought you were being a fool, she would let you know. And I've had the opportunity to get several phone calls from her while I was on the school board to let me know exactly that. But she, you ought to take your time and read the obituary, and she's kind of in the Worcester Hall of Fame as far as character, and I don't mean that in a bad way, of their impact on the community.
Absolutely.
And then finally, we just this afternoon had a swearing-in up at the chalet for two new captains, two new sergeants, and three patrol officers. And that's always a fun day. That was, and we had a full house, given all those promotions. Just a few things looking ahead. Tomorrow night, no, I'm sorry, Wednesday night is a community stakeholder meeting with the OSU graduate team at 6:00 in council chambers. Hopefully you all got the email on that event. Also, that same night, Orville is doing their More Than a Game event for the local Nick Amster workshop teams, and that's a nice opportunity to get together with people over there. The 20th, we have a Worcester Growth meeting. 21st, our quarterly meeting with the Wayne County Commissioners. Same day, we have the Window Wonderland event, which I hope, if you've got kids or grandkids, you have on the calendar. I am happy to report that the new ladder truck is operational, will be in service, and Santa Claus will not be using the elevator on the Briggs Building on Friday night. I drove by the square Sunday morning after I left Mr. Myers at breakfast, and there were fire trucks and lights on in the square, and I thought, oh, no, we had another car on the side. But I was relieved to see they had just blocked off the street to try out the truck. I got an offer of a ride in the basket, and I turned it down. I'm regretting that, because I don't know when I'll get that offer again.
It would have been so much fun.
And then finally, on the 1st, then we have a Community Corrections Board meeting. All right, agenda review, two items, new business, both of which I expect are going to require three readings. Seven items on third and final reading, each involving parcel TIF proposals. I want to address those as quickly as I can, and again, my hope is that these comments will make maybe the discussion, your votes on those, a little easier. Sue me, I guess, if I'm wrong on that one. There were concerns raised at the last meeting about the potential impact of our use of tax abatements and TIFs on the Worcester City School District in their effort to build new facilities. This type of concern is precisely why the Worcester City administration has a long history of being very selective and advocating for the use of those development tools. The intent has been to use them strategically and selectively for the purpose of growing the tax base. And because of that philosophy, the leadership of the Worcester City Schools has largely been supportive of the city administration policy over the years. I want to reassure council and the Worcester City School District that I will do everything within my power to make sure that remains the case so long as I'm mayor. And I've already shared that sentiment with the superintendent, the board president, and our two new Board of Education members. I served eight years on the Board of Education, worked on many school levy campaigns, and chaired a successful one, so I very much appreciate the financial challenges faced by the district and know firsthand the work that goes into getting voter approval for a tax increase. Because of that, I will never present something to council for approval that I believe not to be supported by the Worcester City School District leadership. And it won't take a formal vote by the Board of Education or someone from the school district to showing up at a council meeting. A phone call from the superintendent or the board president will suffice. And I would point out that not only are we in regular communication with Superintendent Tudor, but Mr. Goodright, the board president, and I have known each other since fourth grade when we went to Wayne Elementary together. This brings me to the seven items on third reading. These are each a proposal for a parcel TIF. Ohio law authorizes municipalities to use a parcel TIF to take a portion of the newly created tax revenues for a limited period of time to pay for infrastructure improvements, with the idea that those infrastructure improvements will eventually result in additional development. And that additional development will in turn produce additional tax revenues. The TIF funds must be designated for use on infrastructure projects that are somehow related to the parcel which is the subject of the TIF. The infrastructure improvements for the seven proposals before you tonight can be lumped into four groups. The first is the Apple Creek Bank facility on South Market Street. Funds generated from that project would be used to help pay for the extension of streetscape along South Market Street and other improvements in the Arch District. The second is for the Bell Store and Car Wash at Smithville Western and Cleveland Road. Funds generated from that project will be used to help pay for infrastructure projects along Cleveland Corridor, Cleveland Road Corridor, and Smithville Western. The third is for the Car Wash in the adjacent 45-unit commercial apartment building along Cleveland Road. Funds from those two projects will be used to help pay for infrastructure improvements along the Cleveland Road Corridor. The final group includes the Texas Roadhouse Project, the Car Wash on Burbank Road, and the Chick-fil-A Project. Funds from these three projects will go towards the Burbank Road Corridor and/or the extension of Rifford Road to Cleveland Road. There have been requests for clarification as to exactly how these funds would be used, asking what specifically will be built if these TIFs were approved that otherwise wouldn't happen. The answer to that really is nothing. That is one of the misconceptions going around about these TIFs and the funding generated by them. There's a narrative that TIFs have been used to create some type of slush fund to pay for projects that otherwise wouldn't be undertaken by the city. This narrative is false in two respects. First, the city has never proposed to use TIF funds for a project that we didn't feel was needed, regardless of where the funding was going to come from. Second, the expenditure of these TIF funds, just like expenditures out of the general fund and any other city fund, is done by council action. As the saying goes, city council holds purse strings. However, the availability of these additional funds for infrastructure improvements can impact the timing of when these improvements occur. If all seven of these proposals are approved, they will generate an additional $124,000 a year for the next 10 years, which by itself won't make or break any of the projects identified. However, it will allow the city to expand its capital budget during each of those 10 years, and with the possibility of matching funds from the state and federal governments, increase the impact well beyond the $124,000 coming directly from the TIFs. That increase in funding for capital projects means improvements will take place sooner than would otherwise be the case. And to help illustrate this, this is why I gave, I passed out copies of page 3-11 from the budget book you just received, just as a little bit of a demonstration of this. These are items that didn't make the capital improvement budgets for next year. And if we had another $124,000, or, let's use that, because you can't assume matching funds, we would just be able to dig a little deeper on that list for the coming year. So those are the items that pretty much are, if you want to know what items that additional, those additional funds would pay for, this is an example of what they'd be. And if they weren't paid for next year, they'd be paid for the year after. This brings me to the seven specific pieces of legislation before you tonight on third reading. My initial reaction following our last meeting was to recommend you vote no on all of them. My fear was that the benefits that would result from their passage would be outweighed by the confusion they would possibly create in the community, with some of the confusion caused intentionally by people opposed to the Worcester City Schools' strategic plan. That still may be the case. Now I will refer to council's judgment on these votes. I can see the rationale for going either way, but there are three of these seven projects that I want to make special mention of, and I respectfully disagree. You may vote them all down, you may vote them all in favor, but they are somewhat different, at least these three. Then I'll touch on those just briefly. The first are for the Car Wash in apartments on Cleveland Road. That's 2025-18 and 2025-19. I singled these out for two reasons. The first is that because of timing issues, if we want to do a parcel TIF on these two, we need to do it now because of how close the construction is to completion. The second reason that these two developments, and especially the apartment complex, will clearly and immediately increase the traffic flow on Cleveland Road. The residents in those 45 units, which is almost half the number of units in the Spring Run Development, will use the Cleveland Road Corridor to get to their healthcare providers, to do their shopping, and to get their kids to school. So infrastructure improvements will be needed to handle that increased traffic, and to the extent funds aren't generated by a TIF, they will need to come from the general fund. The other property I would single out is the Apple Creek Bank project on South Market Street, which is 2025-16. There was discussion at the last council meeting as to whether this project was better suited to a CRA, given its location. We'd respectfully submit that a TIF is a better fit for a number of reasons. First and foremost, the TIF funds can be used to provide improvements around the project that would indirectly support the development, as opposed to an actual reduction in taxes for the property owner that would be provided by a CRA. And as a reminder, unlike a TIF, in which the amount of taxes paid by the owner are not affected, the CRA results in an actual reduction in taxes. There are several other aspects of the project that would have made, excuse me, would have made a CRA problematic, and I won't go into those at this time, but it just was not a good fit. With all that being said, I'm not going to argue that any of these seven are vital to the growth and well-being of our community. Looking ahead, it is possible that we might bring a parcel TIF back to you in the future, but we'll do so only after we meet with the new Board of Education to make sure that they are supportive. At some point after the first year, we're going to try to schedule a meeting with the Board of Education, and Superintendent Tudor has been amenable to that, and we would invite the city council to attend if they'd be interested. It would be a public meeting open to all. And as I said previously, we will all be coming back to you with a new TIF proposal if we are confident that the TIF has the support of the school district. Finally, a reminder that a TIF only provides a means of paying for infrastructure improvements and does not affect the administration's decision-making as to what infrastructure improvements are needed, nor council's ability to decide how TIF funds are spent. So with that, again, my apologies for the length of that. Hope that helps your decision-making process, and I will say no more.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have no petitions this evening. We do have communications from the public related to agenda items, which, we have one. Ms. Waller, do you want to speak now?
My name is Ms. Waller. I'm the executive director of Main Street Worcester, and the city of Worcester has been very generous with the Economic Development Fund for our organization. It actually represents a third of our budget. So we're very grateful for that support. We work closely with the city regularly to make sure that we're in alignment with the kind of economic development projects that we do. I want to call out that your city manager is on my finance committee. We have Jonathan and Vince Marion on my Economic Development Committee, and as well as Mayor Reynolds and Joel Montgomery are on my Board of Trustees. So we work closely together, and we value the partnership very highly, and we want to make sure that we are producing the kind of economic impact that makes you feel like you're making a good investment with the money that you give to us. A statistic that I rely on heavily, the College of Worcester found that for every visitor to the kind of free attractions that we do, like the Main Street Music or Kids' Day, each one of those visitors spends an average of $26.58 for every visit that they do. So the economic impact is really strong and has some good data to back it up. But hopefully you had a chance to review the 23 different economic development projects that we did over the past two years, and that encompasses 171 individual events. If you look at every farmer's market, every Main Street Music, that's, that's the outward-facing, visible attraction that we bring to the city of Worcester. So thank you so much for that funding. We hope that you continue it, because quite frankly, if we didn't have it, we would have to curtail a significant portion of the activities that we do. So if there are any questions about the, the work that we do, or any of the particular programs, or how we value or evaluate their success, or whether to continue them, or how they answer us.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. The events that Main Street Worcester puts on, the contribution that you make to keeping downtown vital and vibrant is invaluable. I hear from people so many times, oh, my gosh, your downtown is so wonderful. And I go other places and the empty storefronts, you really don't see that here. There's something to do every single weekend downtown.
I'll concur with that. I just, my wife and I went to dinner in Mansfield about two weeks ago, and some people were, they're sitting next to us, asked where we're from, and we said Worcester, and they raved, you guys have the most beautiful downtown. They talked about a couple of the restaurants here that, they're from Mansfield, they say their getaway is to go to Worcester. So they, I just want to echo that. So you guys do a fantastic job. People are coming from surrounding counties to come and just see some of the stuff that you guys put on. So I can just say outstanding. So I can just say outstanding work.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. That means a lot. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, we have no committee reports.
Mr. President, I do need to schedule a committee meeting.
Okay.
December 1st at 6:00 PM for the finance committee. We will be talking about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearings, and so with that, we'll move right into unfinished business. And if we hadn't muddied the waters earlier, like I say, we will just take these, we'll take these as we normally would, simply from the standpoint that we will be having to vote on the outcome of these individually. So with that, Ms. Hamilton, I'll turn the first one over to you.
Ordinance number 2025-16. An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the city, an area herein referenced as 2025 TIF Market S310, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Okay. I'll open it up for any additional comment or questions. We do have everybody from the administration here for any additional answers that we might need on this.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, I don't think that these are needed. I'm going to vote no on all of them, but I want to thank Jonathan Malley for all the hard work he did, putting it together and taking rapid-fire questions and handling them very, very well over the last couple of meetings. So I just want to make sure, thank you for your time. I don't see the need for these. I tend to vote no on all of them. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Abernathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy.
No.
Ms. Knappich.
No.
Mr. Malta.
No.
Mr. Gaffey.
No.
Mr. Huse.
No.
Ms. Warden.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Item number two, ordinance 2025-17. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-17. An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the city, an area herein referenced as 2025 TIF Cleveland 4782, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy.
No.
Mr. Gaffey.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Warden.
No.
Mr. Malta.
No.
Ms. Knappich.
No.
Mr. Huse.
No.
Okay. Next item, ordinance 2025-18. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-18. An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the city, an area herein referenced as 2025 TIF Cleveland 2695, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy.
No.
Mr. Malta.
No.
Mr. Huse.
No.
Ms. Warden.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Mr. Gaffey.
No.
Ms. Knappich.
No.
All right. Next item, ordinance 2025-19. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-19. An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the city, an area herein referenced as 2025 TIF Cleveland 2775, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Huse. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Knappich.
No.
Mr. Gaffey.
No.
Mr. Huse.
No.
Ms. Warden.
No.
Mr. Malta.
No.
Next item, ordinance 2025-20. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-20. An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the city, an area herein referenced as 2025 TIF Burbank 4900, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Please call the roll on the adoption, please.
Mr. Abernathy.
No.
Ms. Warden.
No.
Mr. Malta.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Knappich.
No.
Mr. Huse.
No.
Mr. Gaffey.
No.
Next item, ordinance 2025-21. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-21. An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the city, an area herein referenced as 2025 TIF Burbank 4855, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy.
No.
Mr. Huse.
No.
Mr. Gaffey.
No.
Ms. Knappich.
No.
Mr. Malta.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Warden.
No.
All right. And our last of old business items, ordinance 2025-22. Ms. Hamilton, if you could please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-22. An ordinance declaring the improvement to certain parcels within the city, an area herein referenced as 2025 TIF Burbank 4147, to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation pursuant to ORC 5709.40B, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy.
No.
Mr. Gaffey.
No.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
I'm just kidding. I'm sorry. I wanted to be. I actually didn't. You answered.
Somebody had to break the silence on that. That was good.
Throwing that wrench.
Good job. Mr. Huse.
No.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Knappich.
No.
Mr. Malta.
No.
Takes care of old business. We'll move on to new business. Ordinance 2025-23. This will also be a Mr. Abernathy item. Before that, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-23. An ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Yeah, this one is for the budget. Obviously, we're going to have a finance committee meeting on December 1st. We don't have the hospital yet, so nothing to talk about yet, so we're going to go ahead and leave this one on its first reading.
Okay.
Can it be on first reading if we haven't read it since we just got?
I didn't read it. Where were you?
Good point.
Technically, we should have gotten it before the meeting, right?
It just needs to be introduced.
Okay.
We'll leave it on its introduction.
There you go. Yeah.
Last item this evening, resolution 2025-66. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-66. A resolution authorizing agreements with various applicants for the use of economic development monies and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, so this is for the bed tax, I believe, here. So we had a chance to take a look at this, some of the money being distributed, and some of the procedures. I know Ms. Knappich asked some questions. I believe you said you were satisfied with the procedure.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions in regards to this?
I have, really, maybe, maybe just a correction unless I'm misreading this. But in section one, it says that the funds are appropriated and awarded for 2024 and 2025.
Hmm.
So I think that's just a.
Typo.
Yeah, it's scrivener's error, so.
Clarical errors.
Yeah. I don't think we need an amendment or anything like that to fix that. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Myers, were you looking to jump in?
I'm just, I was unclear that we had allocated money to the Worcester Growth Corp., and then I went back and found in my 2022, 23 explanation from the city, and we originally had not included them. And then they amended it to include them at a later date. So that was my question, but I think I've gotten that resolved. I don't know why they're included, there shouldn't be, but that's, that's, they have been included.
Okay. All right. I feel like this is maybe one we can actually push through tonight, so I'm going to take the chance and motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Suspend the rules by Mr. Abernathy, seconded by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Mr. Huse.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Okay. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Huse.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Okay. That was easy. I think Mr. Mayor took you more to explain this meeting than it's actually taken to the meeting.
I'm glad I talked first. The voting was that much faster. Why the voting might have been a Senate suit, I said nothing.
Yes, yeah. All right, well, we are now in miscellaneous. We do have one individual that signed up to speak this evening, Mr. Pierre-Louis. You've got a topic of walkability of Worcester, so.
Yes. So, I love your mind. My name is Pierre-Louis. I'm a student at the College of Worcester. And I would just like to make a case for the walkability of Worcester. Walking downtown is amazing. You see all the big, beautiful buildings, and it really feels like you can go wherever you, wherever you please. But I would argue that some parts of Worcester outside of downtown are much harder as an pedestrian and as someone who walks to work three times a week. It's quite, it's quite hard to get where you want to go, and it feels like you're walking against the cars that rather coexist with them. So I'd love to hear some of your thoughts on what a more walkable Worcester looks like. I heard bike paths were mentioned briefly by the mayor. But yeah, that's, that's it.
What are some of the pathways you take to get to work? I'd be curious, the route, so we kind of have an idea.
From the College of Worcester, I walk up to Chapul. And I would say on Burbank Road specifically, that's where I find the largest issue. It feels like a lot of the cars are speeding out from the T-intersections, trying to get to wherever they're trying to get first. That's mainly the largest part of convention, I'd say.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Mr. Gaffey, we'll start with you this evening.
Right. I guess first off, thank you for coming tonight and sharing, you know, your thoughts with us. Definitely appreciate that. Definitely, Jonathan, despite the way the TIF everything went, we, I think, really appreciate the preparation and the information that you share with us and the time and effort that you put in to present these things to us. It's very valuable, and I think it helps us really understand things that we don't necessarily deal with on a daily basis. So thank you for that.
Hi, all. And I'm excited to broken record at seven meetings. That's a great day. I'm here to do that again.
That is a record in the 12 years I've been here.
That's a record in the 12 years I've been here, too.
I just remember that Johnny D. wanted you.
Yeah. A half-hearted yes.
And, Mr. President, and council, you already let me talk once, and I maybe overstated my welcome then, so I'll try it again, but no hard feelings on those votes. Probably our fault for not presenting that better and bringing it, frankly. We anticipated more pushback on why we hadn't done this before than, than on the validity or the merits of the proposal itself, and that was poor planning on our part. So, again, we could have done a better job of planning for that and presenting it, and maybe if we'd planned better for it or prepared better for it, it wouldn't have been presented. And, you know, the council did the right thing under the circumstances, and that happens.
Okay. Thank you.
The only other thing I was going to say is, again, to Main Street, a couple of my colleagues, you know, already said, you know, some, some nice words, but I do, you guys do do a phenomenal job, and our downtown definitely shows that. And so thank you for continuing that work, and look forward to seeing more things in the future. So thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the folks who were fortunate in their most recent election and, and.
Including you.
Yeah, and that's right. Yes. You're the one running against me again. I hope this isn't premature, but I want to thank Ms. Knappich for your years of service to Worcester City Council, and it's been an honor to serve with you, and I appreciate your guidance through this, too, because I know you have been somewhat of a mentor to me in a number of ways, so I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malta?
Thank you. As always, thank you all for attending, and all those watching at home. Past that, you know, transparency, I think, is our best, best goal moving forward, and we can all work together if we know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to point out that the chamber was represented this evening. We didn't, you end up saying we didn't let you talk. You didn't speak this evening, but the Chamber and Main Street work in partnership to do a lot for our downtown community, the events and all the support that they have, the businesses. So I want to thank both of them for all the work that they do. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Husey?
Yes, thank you to the Chamber and Main Street for all you guys do, and the other folks in the package as well, WEDC Visitors Bureau. Yeah, and I don't want my no votes on the TIF to be misinterpreted as an indictment against the administration, Jonathan, the projects themselves, or the comprehensive plan projects. I think at the end of the day, for me, it just came down to timing. Maybe if some things slot in a little differently, I'd be open to reconsidering, you know, a reconstituted package.
Mr. Abernathy?
Thank you. Again, the TIF votes were tough tonight, but I kind of like the way you presented it, Mr. Mayor, is that thinking about bringing maybe back one at a time, and looking at them maybe at a more specific project at a time, and making them maybe more palatable. I think that those could be the pathway that would make it a little bit more comfortable for me and not seven at a time. So that's, that's for me, and I'm with Mr. Husey as well. The timing is maybe a little rough, especially with what the schools have been going through, but I appreciate your sentiment that, you know, there's no bad blood. It's important that the city sees that, you know, we can disagree and we can still get along. I think that our track record shows we agree probably 98.9% of the time, so we are getting a lot of good things done for the city of Worcester. So every once in a while, it's probably not a horrible thing that we disagree on something. So, and I'll just wrap up my portion of this again. I know I said it last meeting, but I'll say it again. It's been an honor to serve with you, Barb. You have been my neighbor to my right for the last two years, lots of times nudging me and giving me some quick education when I needed the most, when maybe I'm a little bit lost. And believe me, for a person that doesn't come from this world or any elected office prior to this, I've needed that guidance to try and learn on the run. So I'm going to miss you, and I really appreciate the mentorship you've given me the last two years. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Knappich?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to reiterate the comments on the TIF of my gentlemen, the gentleman council members, and to my left, I agree with that. And again, I think it's, it's great. It's a sign of good government when we can agree to disagree and move on and still work together. That's how it's supposed to work, federal government. That's how it's supposed to work. So I want to thank everybody who is here tonight and who's here every time that we have a council meeting, the people who watch us on television. I want to thank you as well. Your commitment to and interest in the community has always been such an important thing, and we here appreciate it very much. So, as you probably suspected from the comments, I am stepping down tonight. This will be my last city council meeting, the last issues that we really have to deal with in the next month, the major is the budget. And I would like to give my opportunity to Drew Paul, who is my successor, to actually be able to vote on the budget that he'll be operating under. And I think it'll give him a very good opportunity to go through the budget process before he gets into too much of his term, I guess. It'll be a nice way to wet your feet. I want to congratulate Drew. I want to congratulate our other, our other council member who will be starting with us. I appreciate your willingness to serve. This is a great organization. It's a great city, and I'm going to miss being here very, in the city council, very, very much. I'd like to thank each and every one of the city employees who have been here for the 12 years that I have sat here. The city employees, city of Worcester employees are just amazing. They are, they've always been very responsive to me. I've had my questions asked, answered, rather, and I really appreciate all the help and assistance everyone has given me. I'd also like to thank my fellow council members. It has been an honor and a pleasure to sit on city council with you folks. I appreciate your assistance, your education, filling me in on things I didn't know, and it truly has been a pleasure. And finally, I would like to thank the citizens of the city of Worcester for electing me, for believing in me, and for supporting me. Again, it has been a true honor and pleasure to serve on Worcester City Council, and I thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Give your final motion.
We are going to...
Can I move to your turn?
You can, but...[1644.23]